Thank you. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes. Our second item on the agenda is a confirmation approval of claims. We'll hear Mitch Rogers.
Hello? The total claims for this month are $675,393.19. Last year at this time, it was approximately $126,000 more. So, you can see there in that list, there's some reasons why. I identified several. Superior van, we purchased that conversion van for our special education transportation. That's part of the reason. A heat pump to the middle school. And then also, health insurance payment. You all are used to seeing those health insurance payments to the Kentucky State Treasurer, as well as the federal reimbursement payments. You won't see those any longer. The federal reimbursement's not on here this month either. It's because they're going to be automated, so we're not going to have to run into accounts payable as we have in the past. So that's going to be, again, one change, one difference that you're going to have to see from year to year. And then also, debt service. Our total is $39,080.75 for principal and interest on three bond series payments. Do you all have any questions for me regarding the claims today?
Erica, thank you.
Sure, you're very welcome.
Financial reports as well.
We need approval.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have a motion to approve the confirmation approval of claims?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All opposed? Motion passes. We'll go to item number three, financial reports. Thank you.
So you all have the August ending financial documents. The treasurer's report, as well as the balance sheet, and the annual financial report. You'll see, I'm sorry, not the annual financial, the monthly financial report, you'll see there. We have a verified cash balance of $2,675,932.89. Again, I pointed out last month, you see that there is deficiencies in Fund 451 and 52. Those are related to timing of some entries that we make throughout the year, so you'll see that negative balance there. We're waiting on some receipts and some transfers. That's all that I have today for the financial report.
Would it be possible to put all these munis sheets in one file and just send us the file itself, instead of having this 130-some pages of this?
Sure. I can do that for you to review separately.
You're not, don't do it for me separately, but...
So you want to see the treasurer's report, that cash information with that sheet only, and then maybe perhaps somewhere else in the documents, you'll get the monthly report and the balance sheet?
That sounds good.
Is everybody good with that? Okay. Yeah, I can do that going forward. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our superintendent.
All right, well, happy to share some great things with you first. And if you all remember, every year, the KSBA, the Kentucky School Board Association, invites every board to recognize and identify two students, one male, one female, that meet criteria for the first degree scholarship program. You know, this, it's pretty exciting, needless to say, for students to think about graduating from college when none of their immediate family has before. So, that in itself is very exciting. There is some requirement, minimum requirements that they have to meet. One is that no immediate family member has received a degree from college, a college degree, but also a minimum score of 20 on the ACT in reading. And there has to be some affirmation from the guidance counselor, the board chair, and myself. The two students that were identified are two seniors who are off doing some workplace experience things today, I found out at the 11th hour. But nonetheless, I wanted to share those names with you. Rayana Saul and Spencer Rogentin were the two students identified. And the way this works is those names are carried forward. Mr. Hibson and I will sign off on that. And they would then be part of a drawing that takes place in December. So, we wish them the best of luck. I know that they're very excited to be recognized, and we wish them the very best. So that's the first part of my report. The other is also very exciting. Back in August, the Planning and Zoning Commission reached out to me and to the other local school districts, and asked for help getting involved in the 2020 census. You all know how important that census is. It indicates, you know, the numbers that come out of our community can drive legislative representation, it can drive funding, and do all those things for 10 years, so until the next census. So it is very important. Well, I'm really proud of the fact that not only did we get involved, but we have students that are getting heavily involved in promoting the census. So I'd like to invite you all up, if you would come up to the podium and share a little bit about your work on the census, and introduce yourselves too.
My name's Clay Newton. I'm a senior. And as you said, I'm working with the census committee. And this all started with that meeting at the Planning and Zoning Commission. We've been working with Dan Johnson from Planning and Zoning, as well as Carolyn Franklin, who actually works for the United States Census. And at that meeting, it was addressed two major issues that we wanted to highlight that are very relevant to schools. And the first is that the underrepresented population, the least counted population is actually ages zero to nine, are the most underrepresented on each census every time it happens. And so, we decided that that, along with the economic impacts, the money that we can get from the census, we decided that a committee would be necessary within the schools to get students involved and to highlight the issues that come with the census and why it's so important. So the committee is made up of four people right now, four students. And Coach Clark and Mr. Blanford have been working heavily with us to get these things accomplished. It's myself, Claire Farrell, and we have two freshmen who are actually taking the ACT, but they're working with us as well. Dakota Hawker and Dalton Adams are involved in this as well. And we actually started the process of getting the word out and getting students involved with these contests. I'm going to let Claire talk a little bit more about that.
Hello. So I'm going to talk about these contests. Our main goal is to reach the students, to get them involved. So first is the logo and slogan contest. This is open to the middle and high school students. And our goal for this is for students to submit logos, or logo and a slogan together. So in that way, we will have a committee made up of community and school officials that will decide on the best, which will represent our committee, so you can see some of the rules about that. And it's important, it's representative of our community and not just our schools. And for the younger students, through early childhood, through the elementary school, we have an art contest. Do you have the graphics for the art contest? Okay. So, there's on the graphic for the art contest that we have, but the art contest is just for the younger students to kind of develop an understanding of the census, they can put out an artwork. It might represent our committee in some way, but it's ultimately just so those younger kids, which are the most underrepresented, can understand the census and hopefully increase their being counted on those documents. Now, you might be a little confused as how these kids even know what the census is and why it's important. And that brings me to the statistics and schools resource that the Census Bureau has. That's an online page that gives lesson plans and videos and different resources to the teachers, which they will show the students. A lot of the teachers are very excited to show these lesson plans, because they also understand their importance in the funding and infrastructure of not only our schools, but our community as a whole. So, these contests will hopefully get the students more involved and increase those numbers, and ultimately achieve our goal.
Ms. Farrell, why is it that means zero through nine are underreported? Do they have any reason behind that, or...?
Well, the main reason is a lot with, like, separated parents. It's not really sure, like, which parent should count which one. So there's a lot of issues that come up with that, that kids just ultimately don't get represented at all.
And you may have said this, Claire, too, and forgive me if I missed it, but the winner of the slogan and logo does get, that's going to be, that would be shared across the whole community, right?
Yes, of course. I forgot to mention that. But for the logo and the slogan, they will get a gift card, and they'll get recognition throughout our school's media, but also, and it can be when we promote our new logo, because it will ultimately represent us. The art contest winner for the younger kids, they'll get like a class pizza party, you know, something like that, but they'll also get recognized as well through the media.
It's important to state that the city government were partnered with Mayor Eden, and they have agreed to use that as the official logo for our community.
Oh, wow. Yeah. That's great.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
That concludes the superintendent's report. Great job, you guys.
We'd like to move on to the recognition of visitors. Do we have anybody here that would like to speak? Okay, great. Move on to the approval of the BG1 for the new Barstown Elementary School.
Mr. Hood. This is exciting stuff. Yeah, it is. Exciting times today. Before I get started, I do want to recognize, they didn't wave their hand, because they come here a lot, that our architects are here today. So during the next, actually, the next three things on the agenda, if there are questions that we have specific, they will be happy to jump in and help out with that. So, what you have first before you is an initial BG1 application for the new elementary school. You guys know, we've been talking about this for some time. We've brought before you some documents from the facility plan team. We have, all that has been approved through the State Department. Most recently, we've met with our architects and board members and superintendent and different community members to make sure we were headed in the right direction, and the consensus was that we were, and that our, that our goal was going to be a new elementary school out on our newest facility that we have purchased out at the old Salt River property. Just a couple of things for you to know, that is a priority 1A on the district facility plan. So, you kind of go in order based on what the needs were, and the consensus all came back to that grade level. So what we are looking for is we will be building a 2 through 5 grade level school with an 850-student capacity. What that does is if the 2nd grade through 5th grade will be in that school, that relieves us in a lot of ways. But taking the 6th grade from the primary school gives us more room there that we need. It also frees up a lot of room on this campus that we've kind of outgrown for car riders, bus riders, just people getting around. So we think this is a great plan. The facility, the facility guys that have looked at this, numerous eyes have been on this to make sure we were going down the right path, and we do believe we are. Couple of things of interest, there is money there to pay for it, that's a good thing. The total project cost with everything involved is $21,190,000. And again, that's for an 850-student capacity building that should relieve us from pressures of overcrowding for some time to come. So, that's the goal. So, we're looking for, what the BG1 does is this kind of sets everything in motion. It gives us the ability to go ahead and apply to the State Department, let them know that the monies are available, that we are using the facility plan in order the way it should be. So this, your approval, really gets it moving, like this afternoon.
Any thinking, any discussion?
Ms. Farrell, could you synopsize a timeline, say, you know, you said this afternoon, the big red button gets pushed, so...
Right. So our, what our goal is, is these guys have already started planning, and they're really good at what they do. Our goal would be to move into the building in August of '21. So, there'll be lots of things that happen in the near future, as far as when you would see movement of dirt, earthwork.
Next spring.
Be looking in the spring of '20, and then move in the following August of '21.
Okay, great. Thanks very much.
Pretty exciting.
It's very exciting.
Like to ask for a motion to approve the BG1 for the new Barstown Elementary School?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Great. Now, I would like to move on to the approval for the RFP for construction management services for the construction of the new Barstown Elementary School.
All right, since we are ready to move forward, there's really two ways you can go about doing things. There's a, some folks use a general contractor, some folks use a construction manager. This district has gone both ways. We are, at this point, in talking to some other folks in some other districts, I spent quite a bit of time talking to some guys at Warren County, who build a lot of schools, actually. They've got two or three probably going as we speak, or just finished. So, they were, they led me more in the construction management side, and gave me some reasons of doing so. And architects will do either one, but I am, I, for myself, and for what I think's best for our board and for our school, the construction management seems to be the way to go. So, we have before you the request for proposal to put in the paper for folks who want to become our construction manager, and this is a pretty tight timeframe. We have September 30 listed on there as the RFP date for those, to get those back to us. But folks who are in the business of doing schools, they will, they will put a, they will look at our request for proposal, they will agree to that, and then we will narrow that group down to a workable number for us to interview on who might be our next, be the construction manager on the project itself. So that's what the RFP is for. With your approval, we will move forward with the newspaper, we'll get that in there, we'll have it in for a few days here, and then we'll look forward to seeing who has, who has picked those up and turned those back in on September the 30.
All right, any questions or discussion? I would like to motion for the approval of the RFP for construction management services for the new Barstown Elementary School.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, the next item is the approval for the owner-architect agreement approved field turf.
So, as you know, you guys have already approved the, and you've approved for us to move forward, and the state has approved the initial BG1 for that project. So all of those things are, they're in play. What this agreement is, again, it is an owner-architect agreement, which, again, the guys are here today, they'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have. But really what this is, is for any project that you enter into agreement with, there's an agreement that basically, for me, it lays out what I'm responsible for, what we are responsible for as a district, and what the architect is responsible for in the project. And there's many pages here that we don't, I don't think you want to go over, but I could just tell you from my experience that I've had so far with Sherman Carter Barnhart, that I feel very, very good in what we do and how they operate, and I feel comfortable with them, so I'm asking for your approval for them to move forward with the turf project in an owner-architect agreement with Sherman Carter Barnhart.
Again, the timeline for that?
Yes, so the timeline for that is getting really, really close. If everything works as we anticipate, we would be our last, our last home football game, that's what we don't know, and that's what we hope goes on a little longer than we anticipate. But somewhere around November, we would be looking at starting the demolition process, and of course, depending on the weather, we would, we would hope that the turf would be in sometime March, April of next year. That's our, that's our goal. We want, we want to be able to host track meets next school year, so that's why. But it is a pretty tight window because of playing, of playing football this year. And when I say, when I say that about us winning, because if we're winning, then we're hosting, we're hosting regional games, which pushes that down. So we hope we, we hope we just keep pushing back a week or so. But by the second to third week of November, you should, you should start seeing some movement out there.
Clarify one thing you said. Spring of this school year, they would, they would hope to have that done, or is it more over the summer that they would do?
No, it would be...
Spring of this year, if weather was right and all that kind, I know weather is an issue.
Spring, the spring of '20. So we would, we would be playing on that field, and, well, the track meets, but then we would be playing in August of next year on the new...
Just wanted to start and clarify that.
Thank you.
I thought it also depended on soccer matches later in the year. Football game and soccer matches on the, on the Grace Field.
You mean, for this coming year? Well, soccer will be, they'll be finished for the district and regional tournament for them, is sooner than the football team. So, the football team's going to be your last, last one. And I, that's why I say November, you know, November 10th, 12th, something like that, it starts to get into regional, sectional tournaments, and then, now it could be, I mean, we're still, we're still in the running for first place in the district, so if you're first and you win two games, then you're possibly hosting a third week. And if that's the case, it could run into the third, third week of... But by Thanksgiving usually, unless you're the top top, like top four in your, in your district, or in the whole area, you're, you're pretty much finished, so. We'll be ready in the middle of November to the end of November to move some, to move some dirt, and there's a lot of dirt to be moved.
Any more discussion? Then I would ask for a motion for the approval of the owner-architect agreement for field turf.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you all.
I know where he's put some of that sod.
I'd be there.
That's what I want.
Okay, our next item is the approval for the fiscal year 2020 working budget.
Mitch Rogers.
So, we had a pretty lengthy discussion for the tentative budget meeting detailing what is in that. It's not much to change, as I talked to you all, other than I've updated the salary and the benefits. There's been small incidental things that we have added to that, such as just some educational consultant, it was about less than $10,000, that I've added to that, some minor things. And then also updated the tax rate information, so our revenue's been updated for the latest info. So I'm just going to hit the highlights for you all today. This working budget totals $37,774,977. Fund 1 is $29,942,553. So at this time, our beginning balance is $2.8 million, and that is subject to change with our final audit. Just a reminder, our auditors are going to be here next Monday, beginning next Monday, so there may be some entries that they asked me to make that can affect that in very minor ways. As I said, the budget's been updated with the latest projections for our grant allocations, as well as our state revenue. The budget will likely change when we receive our tentative seek at the end of this month, and then also, we receive our final seek in March. So the budget has been updated with our anticipated update for the tentative seek, which was about $60,000. I may do all aware of that, that our SAR number increased, so we'll see that go up about $60,000. So we've made that change, and that's in your budget today. Also, the tax revenue, 4% increase, as realized in there, of our revenue from last year. So, and then also taken into account, you know, traditionally what we have actually received, so that it's not the full amount, it's about 3% less than that. Also, to make you aware, there's no capital funds request utilized in this budget, so that's about $700,000 that could be available. At this time, we're intending to reserve that for potential facility needs, or if we do see that we need that for future construction cost. On the expenditure side of it, the debt service schedules have been updated for outstanding bond and kids' obligations. Also, the 1% raise to staff, as well as that updated on the salary schedule for them with the step increase. So the salary and benefits for all funds is approximately 77% of budget for all funds combined. In the, in Fund 1, in general fund, that's about 85%, so just wanted to make you aware of that. Also, as we previously discussed, there's some non-personnel areas that have been budgeted, such as technology improvements and school safety. And then, just a final thing, current contingency is $952,394, and that is exactly 3.29%. That's all that I have. Or you want to share any questions?
Any questions or discussion? If not, I would ask for the approval, a motion to approve the fiscal year 2020 working budget. Any motion?
So moved.
Have a second, please?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And acknowledgement of best practices for data security procedures.
So, Mr. Harden is going to go over some highlights of, you know, related to data security and privacy. This is a, this is an annual requirement, that you'll get an update every year. It'll likely be in the August meeting moving forward, but Mr. Harden, today, you've got the floor.
Good afternoon. I just went to take a few moments of your time and give you a basic awareness of the current district's data security and privacy best practices, let you know currently what we're doing. And then I'm going to give you your annual notification that we have reviewed and implemented new measures to enhance those current practices. And when we talk about data breaches from a technology standpoint, they occur in two different categories. Either they're human error, or the other category is basically everything else. Human error would be if I accidentally shared, say, a document containing student information to someone that was unintentionally, say, sister or brother, completely unintentional, or to another David in another district that, you know, has the same name as someone else. Weak or stolen passwords are also human error, if we use passwords that are too weak. Loss or theft of employee devices, in case a laptop is stolen from a car, or a, an iPad. And then there's also the ever-more occurring problem of phishing and something called clickbait. Phishing would be if you... Phishing would be if you received an email or communications asking you in response to divulge information that contains, such as social security number, accounting information, or just basic information on a person or a student within the district. Everything else under the category would be applications such as Microsoft Office or, or any piece of software used by our staff that are unpatched, don't have any security patches, any updates. Hackers fall under the everything else category, which is, you know, basically in the mainstream media, everything seems to carry the word hacking, but that would be an actual person wanting to penetrate current systems that are in place to prevent that. And then malware, which would be pieces of software that are on your computer unbeknownst to you that share that information. The main causes of data breaches, like I said, are those two categories. Current measures, well, for the human error, we lock our, we lock our doors, our file cabinets, our data centers, and all our networking equipment. Supposedly, you know, we do our best to limit access on a need-to-know basis, and we do have active directory policies by the state that help us with those things. As far as everything else, we have software on our computers that protects against malware, we have automatic systems for patching the software. We have vulnerability scanning, web filtration, we filter everything every student, staff member sees on the internet, and we have, through our current provider of internet, AT&amp;T, have denial of service mitigation software. But as far as what we can do differently, or new measures, sometime around the August timeline, not just this district, or the October, fall timeline, not just in this district, but in other districts, we're going to be moving from an eight-digit password requirement to a 15-digit password requirement, and that 15-digit password requirement will not have complexity. So, it would take us a supercomputer less than three hours to hack an eight-digit, non-complex password, as to where if it's a 15-digit, it would take approximately 90 years with the current computing capacity. So that's why we're going to a larger, less difficult password and couple link, complex complexity. We upgraded Microsoft Office license in July to allow for us to actually test phishing practices on our own staff members, make sure they're current and up to date on what a phishing email looks like when we're trying to give them the gold information. For staff members, such as our accounting department, we're looking at going and adopting the two-factor form of authentication, where if somebody tries to log in as Ms. Rogers on her computer, she would receive an email saying, Tracy, is this you, do you really want to log in, or she would receive a text rather, and she would enter a code in which to continue to log in. Email encryption for our health, members of our health staff to help with HIPAA privacy. And then instrumental in this will be the training portion of it, in which our district trainer, Mike Paul, will be helping us to help staff members understand what phishing email is, how to contact us if they think they've been targeted, and how not to divulge information. So those are the new measures we tend to put in place this year, and you will see me again next year to talk about the newest and latest things that have come along, and what we can do to lessen the burden on our staff and our district to keep our students' data safe as well as our staff. Thank you, Mr. Harden.
How do you, how do you, how do you receive continuous training and updating, I mean, do all the folks in your staff, do they...
We have monthly meetings in which we meet with all the regional IT staff members in our entire region in Kentucky.
I'm talking about more like educational, as far as how...
That is also where we, we have vendors that help us with our education. Microsoft is the largest one for that, they help provide us with tools to mitigate those things. Ongoing monitoring of boards, social media, everything else is, you know, you do receive some information through the news, but most of the time I'll see that information before it makes it to the...
I mean, is a full-time job is keeping up with this stuff?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I know in my small regime, it's like, you've got to hire to just, that's all they do is this stuff.
The Department of Education for Technology, CETS, is very, very instrumental in helping us keep all those, all this, so a lot of things are privy to us as a district, are also privy to the other districts. The patch management of software, the antivirus software, the web filtering, all of that is in concert with other districts around the state. We all, because we are all one network, so if, the weakest link in the chain, so to speak, we're all, stay up to date on this stuff as much as possible.
Thank you.
In the event there is somebody did hack in our, in our computer system, is there any software or technology that you could use to track where this came from?
That would be probably up to a larger institution such as the Federal Bureau of Investigation, but we do have measures in place that is under board policy, that we report it to the proper authorities. We have a long list of things we must accomplish if in the event we are notified that there has been a breach. We have a list of action items which we must complete. Once those items go to law enforcement per se, then they would be in charge of getting with our vendors, such as AT&amp;T, for internet access and working with them to identify where that threat may have came from, or how it was done. We get all our notifications from the state on that, usually from the top down. If something is seen or is seen as not working correctly, large amounts of data being sent out or shared incorrectly or erroneously, they will contact us and let us know.
Just to kind of piggyback on Mr. Stone's question, how much of your time or your department's time is on security?
It'd be hard to put a percentage on it, as much as necessary.
All right.
And the main reason is because if we are notified, like say, we could take last month, for example, if we were notified that we had an issue with, say, a teacher who might be getting lots of emails, or emails that they thought were erroneous, or maybe have contacted by friends or family, and then saying, hey, you're sending me emails, you don't know you're doing it, that can take up a very good portion of time.
Okay.
I wish I could put a...
So it can vary?
Yes, it varies from week to week, depending on what pops, and if it does, then, you know, that's kicked to the front of the line rather quickly.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harden.
Thank you very much. Have a good afternoon.
We're going to move to item number 11, approval of certified job descriptions, our second read.
All right, Mr. Bowling.
All right, so, job descriptions, this is certified job descriptions only, this is a second read, and we had a brief discussion about it last month, and just to recap it, you know, having the job descriptions, because this cover our legal bases, and they are asked for in different aspects of paperwork from time to time, and we, I'm finding, are one of the, probably one of the few districts that didn't have any board-approved job descriptions recorded, you know, by our board. So, this is the first step to get certified job descriptions done, and we will begin work on classified job descriptions once these are done, and I've already started some work on those as well.
Okay, any questions or discussion?
Have they seen their job descriptions, or...
Not every employee has seen the job descriptions, but what I did during the process was, I got a committee, basically, like when we did the one for a certified teacher, I got two teachers from each building, fired out a draft to them, told them what I was doing. We had a group email, they chimed in and commented, other people commented on that, and we, so we had some, some discussion, I even called some folks that had questions in a couple of cases, so I did that with each group of people. Of course, some of them weren't a group, like the EPP, for instance, is this one person, so Dr. Clark and Todd and myself sat down and looked at that one, and so that's, that's the process that we went through. It'd be difficult to involve everyone, so representative setup is what, is what we need on that. That's a good question.
Agreed. Well, then I would ask for a motion to approve the certified job description second read.
Someone?
You have a second?
Second.
Second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 12, our approval of certified evaluation appeals panel appointment.
Okay, this is something that we do every year, and it is required by board policy and also statute, and we have a certified evaluation appeals panel, there are two members on that panel, and we, they serve a two-year term, until we elect one every other year. So, we, what we do on that is send an email out to all certified employees asking for a volunteer or two, and then if we have more than one, we actually have a ballot, and we elect one. We did not in this case, we had one person that volunteered to do this, so we did not need to have a ballot election. I think what this is for is if a certified staff member challenges their evaluation, then we have an appeals panel that will look at that, and I don't remember ever hearing of that happening since I've been here, which is a great, great thing, but if it should ever happen, we will have this in place. And then there's not, did we do approval on this?
Yes.
Yes, we do, okay, so we do have to have an approval for it.
Any more questions? As for a motion to approve the certified evaluation appeals panel appointment, so moved. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowling.
Let's go to our travel authorization.
So, there are two travel requests, both are for the high school, one is for the High School Science Olympia, they'll compete on Friday and Saturday, January the 17th and 18th. This is a regional invitational tournament, University of Cincinnati, approximately 25 students would be attending with three chaperones, they would be staying in a hotel near the campus, and their transportation is a school bus. The other is FBLA, where approximately 40 students would be traveling to the Tennessee Titans Learning Lab, they would learn behind-the-scenes workings of an NFL team, students would travel by school bus, and this is October the 15th, so that is not an overnight, but it is out of state. So those are the two, those are the two requests for approval.
We have any discussion, questions or discussion on that? If not, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the travel authorization.
So moved.
You have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to the leave of absence request.
And so the information about leave of absence and resignations are in your board packet? Oh, the leave of absence request, I'm so sorry. Leave of absence, that, that does require approval, that's in your board packet as well.
There are no questions, I'd ask for a motion for the approval of leave of absence request. So moved. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes, now we're down to a person.
Yeah, thank you, sorry about that. So, the other, just, we have two resignations, those also are in your board packet.
Okay, and you have the psych-based council in its needed packet, and that about takes care of us, motion for adjournment, be great.
So moved.
You have a second?
Twenty months ago, I think.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All opposed?
I'll be trysting.